At this time, I'm going to open our meeting to statements from the public. And first, I'll check with all the outer sites and see how many people we have waiting to testify there. On Hilo, do you have testifiers?
Yes, we have two testifiers.
Thank you. Pahoa?
Good morning, Madam Chair. There are no testifiers here in Pahoa.
Thank you. Ka'ou?
Good morning, Madam Chair. We have no testifiers here at Ka'ou this morning.
Thank you. And in Waimea?
Good morning, Madam Chair. We have four testifiers in Waimea. Thank you.
Thank you. And how about Kohola?
Good morning, Chair Eoff. We do not have any testifiers for the council meeting.
Thank you very much. And we do have approximately eight testifiers here in Kona. So I'm going to ask the first two testifiers in Kona to please come forward. That would be Lehuua Lopez Ma'o and Leif Palmer. Please come forward. And Lehuua, you can begin. When you get to the mic, please press the bar so a green light comes on. Aloha, Chair Eoff and members of the county council. My name is Lehuua Lopez Ma'o, and I am here representing Ka'ohana O'Honu'apu. Ka'ohana is a friend of the park, nonprofit organization for Honu'apu Park and Whittington Beach Park in Ka'ou. We are justifying in favor of Resolution 351-14 because the county to purchase the lands of Ka'omano, 1,353 acres, Makai of the highway, located Hilo side of Na'ole Hotel in Ka'ou and a stone's throw away from Whittington Beach Park. Last month, you heard testimonials from nine people about why this important area needs to be purchased by the county and added to Honu'apu Park. I'd like to summarize these reasons. Number one, the area that we're talking about slopes down from the highway and includes almost four miles of pristine coastline with vast marine resources. Added to Whittington and Honu'apu, we would have a beach park of more than 1,500 acres and almost five miles of pristine coastline. This area is still used by local fishermen and opihi pickers for subsistence fishing and recreationally used by kite flyers because of the almost constant wind conditions. Number three, these more than 1,300 acres contain more than 400 archaeological and historical sites, more than 3,900 features. The owner of the property spent more than a quarter million dollars to do an archaeological survey, and it showed a vast treasure trove of archaeological sites and artifacts. With only a few shrub trees on the property, the open space views are among the most spectacular in Ka'ou. And lastly, there is a willing seller, EWN Enterprises, and the Trust for Public Land has agreed to help Ka'ohana O'Honu'apu raise the funds needed to purchase this property. Mahalo. Thank you. You can go ahead.
Well, hi. I'm Leif Palmer, representing the Waimea 13, and I'm here to testify in favor of Resolution 404 and 405. I want to tell you a little about CERT and its potential for our communities. I was made aware of CERT in the spring of 2011. The acronym means Community Emergency Response Training. CERT consists of citizen volunteers who train and prepare to assist first responders in the event of a massive emergency, something like a hurricane, tsunami, earthquake, or some other disaster that presents destruction and injury. We train to know how to handle life search and rescue, fire safety, disaster medical operations. Here's what FEMA has to say about us. Using the training learned in the classroom and during exercises, CERT members can assist others in their neighborhoods or workplace following an event when professional responders are not immediately available to help. CERT members also are encouraged to support emergency response agencies by taking a more active role in emergency preparedness projects in their communities. I think the best way of thinking about our CERT teams is backup. Why do we back up our projects when writing? To minimize losses. Why does a family or group purchase a backup generator? Because we know that it can provide necessary electric power when the grid occasionally fails. Our CERT teams perform a similar function for the professionals who we have in place to care for our community in a time of disaster. If the disaster is too large, our pros can be overwhelmed. And even though they're doing all they can, they may need backup. What a CERT team can do is provide some resilience to the emergency systems that government has in place to help in a catastrophe. To do this, we need to train citizen volunteers and equip and organize them. There are safety concerns, and teams are trained to evaluate what they can safely handle and what is out of their league. I wish that everyone could get the CERT training, even if they find it impossible to join and train with a CERT team. The training provided by the Hawaii County Fire Department is still valuable, even if it would only be applied to disaster preparedness and knowledge of how to handle situations possibly arising in our own home after a disaster. But I would even go so far as to say that the council members themselves attend CERT training so they could comprehend its structure. But CERT doesn't end with training the individual. We work best as a team, and that takes organization and continuing effort, both to expand and streamline what is currently a very moderate grassroots effort. I can't help thinking of the recent disasters in the Siltene Islands in which communities were devastated and had to rely on their own resources.
CERT, can you summarize?
If only they had some CERT teams trained and ready. And I'm thankful that Hawaii County is assisting its communities by promoting civilian preparedness.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm just going to remind everybody that there's a bell that you'll hear when there's 30 seconds remaining. So you have three minutes to testify, and the bell... No, no, I forgot to explain. The bell will signal you for 30 seconds remaining, and then I'll ask you to summarize. So I'm going to ask Hilo to bring forward their two testifiers, please.
Our first testifier is Bobby Seay. I go with you.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for letting me to appear here before the council. I'm here in support of Resolution 402-14 and 412-14. 402-12 refers to appropriation for funds to Neighborhood Watch. I am the Neighborhood... I support Neighborhood Watch. I am the Neighborhood Watch Coordinator for Hawaii Island, and I am thrilled that Neighborhood Watch has been granted these funds from Councilman Iligon. We certainly have been in the background for quite a while, but the times are changing, and Neighborhood Watch has become a wonderful tool for the people of Hawaii Island to help each other. Our motto is "Observe and Report." And we're going to add the word "prepare." We are not in the same league as CERT, but we are there. We are neighbors helping neighbors, and that is the bottom line. We're out there trying to assist the police department in managing the crime situation, and that is also a very important part of Neighborhood Watch. So thank you, Councilman Iligon. Also, for 412-14, thank you, Councilman Kern, for your support in our upcoming Neighborhood Watch roundup. The funds will be going to encourage people in Districts 5 and 4 to come together as a group and learn more and do more as Neighborhood Watchers. So thank you again, all of you, and the council for your support.
Our next testifier is Shelley Mahi.
Aloha. My name is Shelley Mahi Makaula Makoa. I am from the Ohana of Oha'i. I'm also descendant of Navigators. So I was very happy to see everybody, and I just want to make sure to put this message to Carrie concerning case number 17 in the Seabed Despects Chamber at Hamburg, Germany, for the protection of the Pacific Ocean against ocean mining in the area. Mahalo. I'm here today, I want to testify on Resolution 351-14 concerning the POC, Public Access Open Space Natural Resources Commission, and the County of Hawaii for purchase of Ka'omano and Popo Vella. I needed to just bring to the attention of the county this book from the Territory Laws of Line 2, 1925, and it does list Popo Vella and Ka'omano as being Crown Lands. And I'm assuming that therefore they would be subject to a vote on the Senate floor concerning Crown Lands or so-called Seabed Lands. And I also have here a letter from the Corporation Council. It's dated November 12, 2009, and it states that the so-called Seabed Lands that were ceded to the United States never became the property of the United States. So therefore, it would be in question as to passage of Crown Lands to the county under POC. Now, I wanted to say that the area is beautiful. I love Ka'ou, and the preservation of the area is very important, and that I'm in support of the county entering into some sort of agreement, if possible, and to amend or whatever's necessary to a non-purchase agreement, and that perhaps the $10.8 million could be spent in another way for the public for maintenance under the fund, and that also to work better with native tenants and fishermen and whatnot in the area. One report is Report 80-2, which is Majestic Ka'ou, the Mo'olelo of the Nine Ahupua'a. Here is a map. I will make it available. It's of Honu'apu Bay. It does show different land commission awards. And this particular Honu'apu bay, as I know, it was very important in history to the Navigators in the days of the lands of Kupua, where they sailed up to Vancouver and New Zealand. So I'm asking, if possible, I don't know if you need to go into some sort of special review, our council with the Corporation Council to find out what are the laws. Also, in reference to POC, the Director of Parks and Recreation shall provide a short written evaluation of proposed project. We're having a problem with parks and wrecks in the area because we have a no-spray zone that's issued that we have presented to various officials and whatnot, and we are not able to get any compliance.
Can you please summarize?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, so basically, I'd just like to summarize stating what the county has said that they wish to be good stewards of the area, and that in this situation concerning the Seabed Lands, that it may be moved the county to seek an alternative to the situation and actually save the county $10.8 million on a purchase from a seller that has... They are an unauthorized seller in a land that is probated under probate of Mount Kona.
Thank you, Bert.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
I need to... One last thing is that that whole area is 855-9B of King Wainalino, and so subject to different probate laws and contract laws. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Waimea now. Do you have two testifiers ready?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. I have Pete Hendricks, who is representing Waimea Preservation Association. Excuse me. He's in support of Resolution 404. And then Paul Johnstone, who represents Waimea Preservation and Spencer House, and he's also in support of Bill 351.
Good morning, council members. My name is Pete Hendricks. I'm Vice President of Waimea Preservation Association, an active 501(c)(3) nonprofit in Waimea, formerly Main Street. Just to give you a little bit of background, our current projects include restoration of the 1921-built cottage on the county corner, which we leased from Parks and Recreation, and we offer it to small groups now, community groups. The Waimea Trails and Greenways Project, which is in conjunction with the county. The Waimea Middle School Oral History Project, which we're just wrapping up, and that includes the Farmers of Waimea. And we're in strong support of the Spencer House Project, which includes restoration of the historic home and also headquarters for the CERT program, which would be Resolution 404-14. And we would like to support this very appropriate use of the Spencer House for the CERT program and strongly support the CERT program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Good morning, Chair and council. My name is Paul Johnstone. I live in Waimea, and I come to support Resolution 404-14 and also 405-14, both of them CERT in Waimea. And what I thought I'd do is give you a little bit of a history about the Spencer House. The earliest history of the house dates back to 1838. William French, who was a Honolulu merchant, in fact, he was a very successful Honolulu merchant, so successful they called him the Merchant Prince, came over to the Big Island, Kauai in Waimea, to establish a base for cattle operations, which he was going to use to supply the whaling trade. And in 1838, he purchased a three-acre piece of land from the Hawaiian Governor Kwikini, who was governor at the time. This three-acre piece of land had a slaughterhouse on it, and French bought it for a good horse. That was the bill of sale. Since that house was built, in some place in the late 1840s, 1850s, the original house was built. We think it was built by Frank Spencer, who came over to houses of Annette Crumhalle, who also worked with Mr. French, but French died in 1851. Since the house was built, it's been used for many kinds of things. It was originally for textile operation. In fact, there's a picture from 1877 of a grass shack there where many travelers noted that there was a store. They sold tarot from IPO and other items there. It's also been used as a port, a hotel. And in 1985, it was converted from a residence to a commercial operation. And you probably know it from the map when you passed through Waimea and seen the big building next to McDonald's. The Spencer family actually still owns the house and are in support of what we're doing with this. Frank McCollum Spencer died in Honolulu in the 1890s, and he was known throughout the island at that time according to his obituary, for his generosity and a very, very good host. So in the spirit of Mr. Spencer, Waimea Preservation Association and the Spencer House Committee of the Association would like to see the house used for the benefit of the community. We're looking to rent small pieces of it for nonprofits and other organizations that are doing good for the community. CERT obviously fulfills this requirement, and it would be a great thing to have a CERT team there, keeping with the tradition of Frank Spencer, and I urge you to support both of these resolutions. Thank you very much.
Is there... Are you ready to testify in Waimea, or can you wait while I testify?
Yes, you can wait in line.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to go come back to Kona and ask for Cindy Kessler and Paul Roman to
I'm Cindy Kessler from Waikoloa.
Is the microphone on? There's a green light.
Yes, why not?
Okay, just get a little closer to it.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Cindy Kessler from Waikoloa. I'm a member of Waikoloa CERT, which was formed in February 2008. I'm here with Paul Roman. Paul and I are charter members of Waikoloa CERT. We are here to support Resolution 405, which provides funding to District 9 CERT teams for equipment and supplies. We would like to thank Civil Defense and the Hawaii Fire Department for providing CERT training to residents and providing ongoing training opportunities to CERT team members. Last November, we attended the Hawaii County CERT Leadership Conference offered by Civil Defense and Hawaiian Fire. The conference was held in Hilo. One of the speakers lived on Kauai when Hurricane Aniki hit Kauai. She told about how it was to live there after Aniki. Roofs blown out homes, roads blocked by fallen trees and debris, no power for 30 days, no running water, no phones, price gouging for food, water, and ice. It was terrible. Civil Defense issued a CERT kit to train participants who join the CERT teams. The kit is a duffel bag or a backpack. It contains some search and rescue equipment, gloves, flashlight, soap shovels, and basic metal supplies, medical supplies, bandages, gauze, et cetera. All the medical supplies issued fit in a gallon-sized Ziploc bag. Medical supplies have expiration dates and need to be replaced periodically. We all hope we will never see devastation like Aniki. CERT teams need equipment and supplies to help us be ready for whatever emergency occurs, to help us do what we have been trained to do, provide leadership in responding to an emergency in our community until professional responders arrive. Thank you for supporting Resolution 405.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that as the Communications Officer for our CERT team...
Sorry, sorry. Could you state your name for a reference?
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul Roman. As the Communications Officer for our CERT team, we often have to renew the batteries or replace the batteries that are in our two-way radios that we use to communicate within the CERT team. These items, as Cindy said, as well as the items that are in our first aid kits, need to be replaced from time to time and cost money. So we're very appreciative to the councilwoman for bringing forward 405-14, and we support it wholly. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll take the testifiers in Waimea now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have Patty Cook, who's representing herself and a member of the Volunteer Friends of Historic Spencer House Committee. She's in support of Resolution 404. And then we have Joel Cohen, who represents himself, and he's in support of Bill 181.
Aloha from Waimea. This is Patty Cook. Thank you very much for the time, and thank you, compliments, Willie, for supporting this. CERT, I think Leif did a terrific job of explaining why community self-sufficiency and resiliency are so important. We've had a hard time getting CERT going in Waimea. Really appreciate the support for pushing it forward and getting our community more organized, trained. Using Spencer House is a brilliant idea because it's such a great win-win. We'd really like to see Spencer House become more of a community center, be able to be used by community groups, not just sitting empty. This beautiful old home sitting empty is pathetic. So there's a group of us working very hard to get it back to life, and this would be a great kind of foundational tenet for us that would also serve the CERT and the emergency community well. We also thank Civil Defense for being a part of this. Thank you.
Aloha, Chair Eoff and members in the council. My name is Joel Cohen. I'm speaking as an individual regarding support for Bill 181, Code of Ethics, Revisions, Amendments. My wife and I were on vacation, basically, so we weren't able to attend the finanztivity discussion on that, but I did see it on cable TV, so it's safe. My comments are based on what I've heard. I believe this bill is related to ethics and long-term issues regarding the county credibility as far as ethics, and not just short-term, considering what's happened in the past and what will be happening in the future, of developing a policy that creates a fair playing field for bidding on contracts and is in the best interest of the county. There was a couple of issues that were brought up, which are certainly valid, brought up in the committee meeting, which are certainly valid regarding the cost that could be incurred because of passing this legislation. Also, there was some concern regarding the hiring or contracts contracting with local people and eliminating that process. I believe these are not legitimate arguments as related to this legislation, which is focused on ethics. I believe these other issues need to be taken separately and discussed at length to find solutions, which I believe there would be solutions. I see no reason why somebody submits a bill for $5,000 or a contract for $5,000, and another one comes at $50,000, which is totally excessive, above the amount that the staff had estimated for that, that we actually are... It's necessary to take on approval of that. I think that could be worked out in procedure. Regarding local involvement, I believe that we should maybe do a better job of identifying potential bidders for contracts.
Can you summarize, please? You have 30 seconds.
I would recommend, basically, that discussion continue regarding this bill, and I'm hopeful that more consideration would be made for the comments that I made. Mahalo for listening.
Thank you very much. Here in Kona, I'd like to ask Debbie Baker and Tina Stewart to please come forward.
Happy May Day. My name's Debbie Baker, and today I'm representing the Ka'oua Village Business Improvement District in support of Resolution 409-14 and Bill Number 247. Last year, the Ka'oua Village Business Improvement District adopted its five-year strategic plan, updating it, and delivering a plan to address the lighting and pedestrian lighting needs along the Ee Drive, which noted as one of our top short-term objectives. As we all know all too well, thematic heritage lighting is needed to transform historic Ka'oua Village and spark residents and visitors to return at night. We've got a lot of dark spots there that prevent people from enjoying what can be a beautiful scenic area. This would further boost economic activity and also serve to improve safety and security. KVVID seeks to develop a pedestrian-scale lighting plan that improves overall illumination within public spaces and celebrates our historic and cultural landmarks with this lighting design. Preserving the history of a place through its significant historic resources gives our community a unique character. Within a quarter of a mile on Ee Drive are three of Hawaii's most significant historic sites, Ahua'nehe'au, Moko'a'ka'ua Church, and Huliha'ipama's Stone. These areas are particularly dark at night, and people that are coming down into the village don't get a chance to even enjoy the outside of those facades. As a matter of fact, I think there's a single light bulb over Moko'a'ka'ua Church, and it celebrates its 195th anniversary next year. But to accomplish this large project in phases, KVVID committed its funds required for the conceptual design plan in Phase 1. So we knew we needed to break this large project in phases. We hired, through an RFP process, Albert Cheung Associates out of Honolulu to design the conceptual lighting design because of their impressive work with other historic sites and buildings throughout Hawaii, for example, the Royal Hawaiian Hotel in Waikiki. Initial walkthroughs have already been conducted with community stakeholders, and Phase 1 conceptual design plan should be complete within the next 12 months. and Phase 1 conceptual design plan should be complete within the next 60 days. Next up in this process, I'm reading to collaborate with our partners, the Department of Public Works, and additional engagement and stakeholder outreach. We hope that this grant in the Reso and the Bill will help us accomplish Phase 2, which advances the conceptual design to shovel-ready projects with engineering and construction drawings. And we are, in parallel, already working on Phase 3, which is finding funding to implement the construction after we have the construction drawing. Mahalo for your support. I was reminded this morning of the importance of stewardship and kulinana, and I hope that this project can implement those values. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. My name is Tina Stewart. I'm from Waimea, and I want to thank the council members for allowing me to speak in support of Resolution 404 and 405. You've already heard from the Preservation Society of Waimea. I think it would be helpful to have a Cert headquarters in Waimea. It's central. If something happens, people will be heading upland, and we are upland. The center house is right close to the hospital, close to KPA, close to A Hardwear, close to Waimea Airport. It is a central locating place that people can come to gather information, to get assistance, and for us to store supplies. In support of the supplies, we need replacement of supplies. My background is nursing. I've been through three hurricanes in Florida. I've lived with water and without electricity for 14 days, not like other places. But the response team was wonderful. I want our Cert to be as recognized in Waimea as they are in other places. I want to thank Lee Palmer for keeping our Keiki Cert team alive. To the people who trained us, I went through the recent Cert training. This is my book. I'm still reading it. I learned about cribbing. I learned about bug-out bags. I didn't know about these things before. I want to thank the firefighters who trained us and took their time on Saturday, and to you all for helping support the Cert team. Thank you.
Thank you. The last testifiers that I have in Kona Thank you. Do you want to go first, Tony?
I'll go last.
Go last, okay. Then you can go ahead, Kate. Push the button to make sure there are brief lights coming on.
Is there a light? Can you hear me? Okay. Good morning. I would like to just take a moment and take the opportunity to thank Karen Eoff and other council members for the $6,000 grant to afford the opportunity for the children at Uluvini to attend the Parks and Rec Summer Fun Program. Many of our children don't participate in extracurricular activities and have most of their time spent on the Uluvini campus. So I'm very thankful that they'll have this opportunity to interact with children from the larger community and have exposure to athletic opportunities that the county provides. And I just wanted to thank you very much for affording us that opportunity.
Thank you. Is the light on?
Oh. I want to thank you all here and in East Hawaii for the moments I'm going to take of your time. I'd like to acknowledge, first of all, I'd acknowledge a Cert person on the council and Councilwoman Ford, one of the very first Cert team founders of Kona. I want to thank Councilwoman Willie for having introduced the two bills that she did in support of Cert in her district. I'd like to acknowledge our Cert members Cindy and Paul, Tina and Lee, Alan back in the back, for showing up in support of Cert today. As you all know, first of all, I am the Cert Coordinator for Hawaii County Civil Defense. I have been at that position with much humility for about a year. I took it because the staff person who has been doing it was absolutely overwhelmed to do his regular civil defense job and also to take care of Cert. And though my goals were lofty, we're still running way behind on a lot of stuff. I manage about 40 hours a week at Civil Defense, full-time volunteer. And there, I would not be able to do anything that I do if it wasn't for the great support from all of the 20-plus teams that we corral on a weekly basis for several things. But to the point of Councilwoman Willie's proposals, I would like to show support in more than one way. I'd like to acknowledge that her vision, though she has no idea what's going on as far as preparations for Cert going forward, her vision's right on. Having a central facility in the Waimea area for the Waimea community is exactly on task with what we're trying to do with Cert. We're currently doing a program around the island right now that focuses that. And the way we're presenting it is having a central facility when all traditional forms of communication goes down provides the Cert team and the community to both get and give information via amateur radio to Civil Defense and back out. We've been practicing this now for two years. Well, actually, this year and last year, two years. Maconee Peheli last year, Flossie last year. Is that one bill?
30 seconds.
Do I have four I'm talking about? So is that like 405?
Let us know when you transition to the next item.
Okay. When you say wound up, I'll go to the next. In any case, I wanted to say thank you because her vision's right on. I believe Waimea's team is under great leadership at this point. Lee has spent a lot of time trying to get CPR back to life again. We did graduate an ICIC class last month. Thank you. I'm going to transition to 404 now. And I think it's really important, not just for Waimea, but for every district to look at. An exercised, organized Cert team is a resource in the community. I was just told by the planner at Civil Defense, chaos theory says the level of preparedness that you are at actually is relevant to the level of recovery you will be at after an event. And when there is an organized exercise team, that resource then provides that community a resilient factor that they wouldn't have had otherwise. So having support from every area is wonderful for every community. And the volunteers who go through the training are exercised by their meetings as well as by Civil Defense during different exercises. And they're getting kind of worn out. I'm about to call on them for Maconee Peheli for several other events that are coming up. And every time I send out that request, I get a lot of positive feedback. So they are being exercised. We don't ever want to see it happen, but at least we'll be prepared, and that will make us recovery-prepared as well. So I'll transition for that. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you all who support Cert. I appreciate it. And especially you getting out there and doing Cert. I don't even want to do what you've done already. I'm going to transition over to 402-14, Councilman Iligon's proposal for appropriation of funds for Neighborhood Watch. I'm going to switch hats from Cert to Coordinator for Kahakai Neighborhood Organized Watch Group. I am the lead there as well, to take that happen. I appreciate, on behalf of our Neighborhood Watch group, the funding. It is a right step in the right time. I appreciate Bobby's tireless efforts in getting the island Neighborhood Watch together and working with your office to get the money appropriated for the best advisors and the many things that different teams are going to have, including communications. That's awesome. Our team has proven statistically that a sign on a road can reduce your crime. It has. We had 30 burglaries in November 2011. We formed 2012. We get our stat reports every month. On every single street where there's a block captain, there's also a sign. The stats show that the crime has moved across the way. So it's still in our community. We still have to get rid of it. But where they know that there's a block captain, they don't bother anymore. So it's an important thing to have the funding. We've done it by fundraising, but having your money to be available to provide signs for Neighborhood Watch groups around the district, that's awesome. Thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, and I'll see you later at Kuna Watch. I'd also like to talk with regards to 405. What is your number, Councilman Kern? It's 411? 412, I'm sorry. To Councilman Kern's generous donation as well to Neighborhood Watch for the corral that Bobby was referring to earlier. I think that's going to be a great time. As many things as we do for our community as Neighborhood Watch, it's amazing how many people in that one little community come up and go, wow, I didn't know we had Neighborhood Watch. There are signs. We're at all these events. They still don't know. So that's going to be a great boost for all of the folks who attend that from District 4 and 5. So I encourage the rest of you to look at your areas for Neighborhood Watch as well and as much as you can to support them. Thank you very much. Today has been a day of... Excuse me. I came here for this today. My blessings, is what you said earlier. Like, I've driven 46,000 medical miles. What a faith they must have. And the Boy Scouts, they provided the spine boards and the cribbing that was their Eagle Scout project for all the teams last year. So the symbiosis that goes into everything in our community is blessed. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here? Or do you want to testify? If she didn't already fill out one of these, then you could do it afterwards. After you're done.
My name is Alan Robbins, and I'm a team leader with the Cert team in Kaileua Kona, the University of Nations, there's two there. And I'm one of the, probably a handful if not less, federally registered Cert instructors in the state. And so we've run a Cert training now about six times in Kaileua Kona. We're currently running one right now. And I want to speak on behalf of 404 and 405-14 resolutions. We do so appreciate your support in maintaining this resiliency that we have developed. We probably have now well over 300 people that we've helped train. We're running courses between 30 and 40. We have to cap them at 40 sometimes, people when we run it here. But the fact that they stay involved, even though they may not all come to a regular monthly meeting when there's an emergency, they're all there. And they know enough to have a useful place. And it's now being written into the standard best practices for both our fire departments, the airports here. I just wanted to, again, speak strongly in favor of these two resolutions. So thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Ford was requesting if you could stay till we get to the item on the agenda. Ms. Ford has asked if you'd be able to stay for a little while and listen while we get, when we get to the item on the agenda. Is there anybody in any of the outer locations that would like to testify before we close this portion of the meeting? Hearing none, we will move on to order of resolutions. I've been...
Chair Eoff? I'm sorry, this is Yellow. Shelly Vani would like to testify one more time.
No, I... I did vote for the testimony, so I'm sorry for that.
It's on Bill 245. Is there, do I have clearance?
Is that under Bill for first reading? Because if it is, you can come back next time. It'll be moving to second reading. I'd like to move on at this time. I'd want to tie a close public testimony.
Okay. I just want to make sure everyone knows about the May 12 meeting at 10:00 a.m., Public Access Open Space After Resource Commission hearing to set policy on native tenants in open spaces.
Thank you. Thank you. Before I go to order resolutions, Ms. Ford would like to...
Thank you. I move that we suspend the rule on a five-day hold for all contingency relief fund items that are approved today.
Any discussion? If on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That's eight ayes. And we've suspended the holdover rule for contingency. I believe Daryl Oliver is waiting in Hilo, and he's asked us to take some resolutions out of order. And if there's no objections, I'm going to ask Mr. Cook to please read Resolution 398 on page 7.
Resolution 398-14, transfers appropriate and appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit saved to the designated fund account for the purchase and installation of two emergency call boxes in Kahena. Transfers appropriate, $25,000 out and from to our council services, contingency relief, Council District 5, credit saved to Civil Defense Agency equipment, miscellaneous equipment, Kahena emergency call boxes. Reference Communication 839, introduced by Mr. Kern, wave FC.
Mr. Kern?
Madam Chair, move to approve Resolution 398-14.
Thank you. Look by Mr. Kern, second by Mr. Kinnipah.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kern?
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions for Director Oliver or anybody else. This has been something that the community's wanted for many, many years. This is an area where the communication is spotty at best. It's an area where people get into the water frequently, an area where accidents do happen. And it's an area that really needs an emergency call box. So this is just the same emergency type of call box that you see elsewhere on the side of the road. It's going to be right there, located in East area. I'd really like to thank Civil Defense for working on this, Department of Finance, police, this has been quite the effort, and my staff has been working on this for quite a while and really brought it together. So I just want to say, I truly support the state mahalo.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver, did you have anything to add?
No, just to reinforce it's been a collective team effort on all the departments, all the staff. Looking forward to getting this project off the ground.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? On favor, Resolution 398-14, please say aye. Any opposed? I hear eight ayes. And resolution is adopted. Resolution 398 is adopted. Moving to page 9 on the agenda, Resolution 402.
Resolution 402-14, transfers appropriate and appropriation out and from designated fund account and credit saved to designated fund account to assist with activities of Neighborhood Watch groups and community emergency response teams, Cert, which promote emergency preparedness, community safety, and crime prevention. Transfers appropriate, $20,000 out and from from council services, contingency relief, Council District 4, credit saved to Civil Defense Agency, Civil Defense Agency, other current expenses, miscellaneous contact services, Cert and Neighborhood Watch program expenses for Council Districts 4 and 5. Reference Communication 843, introduced by Mr. Iligon, wave FC.
I move to approve Resolution 402-14.
Thank you. Look by Mr. Iligon, second by Mr. Kern. Any discussion?
I mean...
Mr. Iligon.
I apologize.
Go ahead. That's all right.
And I also want to say, thank you for a second, Councilman Oliver. I... One of the things that we've been doing in Kona is that we've been getting all the Neighborhood Watches together. But this does not only give money to Neighborhood Watches, this also gives money to Cert. It's because there's a lot of people involved in Neighborhood Watch and Cert. And one of the things that we wanted to focus on is bringing District 4 and District 5 together. And one of the issues we have at Neighborhood Watch is that when a crime happens in one area, it doesn't just stay in that area. It also spreads around different areas of Kona. And the better we communicate... And the better we communicate, and the better equipment that we have, or the better resources that we have access to, the better we can prevent crime. And you want to, I put a lot of money into this because I wanna make sure Neighborhood Watches are well-equipped, and also the CERTs to have the resource. So I just wanna say thank you, Administrator Olivera, for making this happen. And Bobby, I just wanna also thank you for getting all the necessary equipment, 'cause I know it takes a lot of time and effort to get those quotes, and also to get the right information for the Neighborhood Watches. I also wanna thank Tony out there, I love you too. I just wanna say that you've been a great help in making CERT happen. And I, I'm really proud of this contingency block, because it took a lot of work to get the Puna Watch together, having that monthly meeting, and getting everybody on the same page. And now with this resource, I feel like we can really make a difference in our community. So I, once again, just wanna thank everyone for their help.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution 402-14, please say aye. Any opposed? Eight ayes, Resolution 402 is adopted. Resolution 404, Mr. Clerk, on page 9.
Resolution 404-14, transfers appropriation, appropriation out and from the designated fund account, and credit saved to designated fund account for the community emergency response team, CERT, to Red State at the Wai Meeah Preservation Association Spencer House. Transfers appropriate, $10,500 out and from, for Council Services, contingency relief, Council District 9, credit saved to Civil Defense Agency, Civil Defense Agency, other current expenses, miscellaneous contract services, CERT Red. Reference communication 845, introduced by Ms. Willie, wave FC.
Ms. Willie? Motion by Ms. Willie, second by Ms. Ford. Assuming discussion?
I just wanna say this is a really a win-win. I know we wanna keep our comments short, it was a long agenda, and I think that those who have spoken here in public testimony have really epitomized what I would say. And I wanted to say just in terms of the headquarters, locating it in Spencer House makes it so that we're also able to support the nonprofit, supporting the Spencer House, which has been a community effort of raising funds in order to lease this property. So I think it's important, not just for our community, I think what Team Stewart said is the location is near police, it's near the hospital, it's near hardware, it's near the grocery store, it's near the fire department, it's near my office. And it will provide sort of a central location, and that it's important, not just for my district, for the island, as you're doing evacuation plans, where do you evacuate, depending on what kind of disaster it is. Over in Pahoa, you might be going to the Hilo Airport, if there was something, there may be times that those along the coast would be coming to Wai Meeah. So I just think organizing on this level is important. And I lastly just wanna recommend Lee's effort, Palmer's efforts, we really, the 13 in Wai Meeah was relatively defunct, and he has been sort of the mass to help bring it all together. And so now we will have a place, and we will have a sign, and we thank you to Civil Defense and how this will operate, and Tony, and I think that stressing that this emergency preparedness does not just deal with preparing for an emergency, but also contributes to the whole sense of resilience on the island, from agriculture on down on a day-to-day level. So thank you again for your consideration of this motion, this resolution.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution 404, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight ayes, resolution is adopted. Moving to Resolution 405, which 10, Mr. Clerk.
Resolution 405-14, transfers appropriate, appropriation out and from the designated fund account, and credit saved to designated fund account to provide supplies and equipment for the community emergency response team, CERT, serving Council District 9. Transfers appropriate, $10,500 out and from, for Council Services, contingency relief, Council District 9, credit saved to Civil Defense Agency, Civil Defense Agency, other current expenses, miscellaneous contract services, CERT supplies, Council District 9. Reference communication 846, introduced by Ms. Willie, wave FC.
Hearing Ms. Willie, motion to approve. Move by Ms. Willie, second by Mr. Kern. Any further discussion?
This is the same objective and purpose that I discussed before, and will provide supplies for District 9, and I'm hoping that'll include a big sign that says Headquarters, CERT here. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Resolution 405 is adopted. Mr. Clerk, Resolution 412, on page 12 of the agenda.
Resolution 412-14, transfers appropriate, appropriation out and from the designated fund account, and credit saved to designated fund account to assist with expenses associated with the Neighborhood Watch program roundup, net event. Transfers appropriate, $5,000 out and from, for Council Services, contingency relief, Council District 5, credit saved to the Civil Defense Agency, Civil Defense Agency, other current expenses, miscellaneous contract services, Neighborhood Watch program. Reference communication 854, introduced by Mr. Kern, wave FC.
Thank you very much. I move to approve Resolution 412-14.
Thank you. Move by Mr. Kern, second by Mr. Canuha.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, this is just my effort to, my contribution to help the Neighborhood Watch, kinda bring them together and see how they can cross, collaborate and work together. It's all about the people in the community doing that hard work out there. This is so easy for us, for me to sit up here and contribute, and it really takes all you out there, so I just wanna really say I appreciate that and your support.
Thank you. Any other opening words?
Thank you. I think that was the last CERT thing that we're doing.
I think so.
I think so. So I wanted to wait until this moment, not because of Mr. Kern, contingency fund, but I wanted to comment to Darrell Olivera, former Fire Chief, and also now the Civil Defense Administrator. And thank you, Tony, for your wonderful comments. I just wanna make a few comments about CERT generically. And, you know, I tried for a few years and sort of gave it up, but maybe I'll get more interested after I'm off the council. In trying to get a Boy Scout badge for CERT training, it's a 40-plus hour training, and I would like to see the Scouts get a badge for it. And frankly, I think every kid that graduates from high school should have to take that 40-hour class. If you're ever gonna be a parent, you need to know these skills, because you're gonna deal with broken arms and legs and bloody faces and whatever, you need to do it. In Utah, 60,000 people are trained as CERT volunteers. About 25% of them are active, they go to every monthly meeting, but they're trained, and so if a disaster occurs, they all stand up at the same time and report for duty. Now, we've got, I think, 22 teams right now, something like that. But we wouldn't have a single team if it wasn't for Darrell Olivera when he was the Fire Chief, and we first, and Mitch Rock, by the way, who was instrumental in getting the very first class that made us aware that what CERT was and why we needed to do it. These two men have been instrumental in getting CERT up and started initially with my team in South Kona, and then expanding it over the years, from 2006 when I came on to the County Council. And I wanna commend Mr. Olivera since he's here, because without him, getting Tony in there, and by the way, Tony is pretty indicative of a CERT volunteer, 40 hours a week almost, volunteer time. We need to get this woman on our payroll. But anyway, we couldn't do it without you, Tony, thank you so much. The struggles that we've had over the years, I won't go into. But let me just comment a little bit about CERT. Once you're trained in CERT, you'll be surprised at the number of times you actually have to stand up. My team has stood up in the earthquake, we self-activated, 'cause we lost all communication for two and a half hours, we couldn't even reach the EOC. And so we went around to make sure people weren't pinned down under buildings on all the public roads and all the public facilities. We've supported the police department and the tsunami to keep people from going down into the tsunami zone. I do not know what possessed anybody to go down into a tsunami zone, but they do it all the time. I personally served at the scene of accidents on the highway. You've got your little pack in your car, and you just do your thing, you know? So CERT is a lot more than just disaster training, it's life training. And that's why I think high school kids, especially the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, should have a badge so that they are, they get motivated to do that, and I, so I wanted to say that while you were here, so that maybe you can help me with that. Darrell, could you go ahead and talk about anything you want to about CERT? I'm gonna be quiet now, thank you.
Well, thank you, and good, thank you for the surprise, but really it's to everybody that's been part of this program, and they get who, as you alluded to, there's been some growing pains, but it's continuing to develop, grow, improve, get better and better. And one of the objectives for this year is to have additional train, the trainer courses, so that we can expand our instructor pool beyond just the fire department, and actually engage some of our CERT members in the community as instructors, that allow for more of a reach and further delivery of the program and continue toward the program. And we definitely see the value with, as you mentioned, engaging the youth and providing the training to them, as you stated, not only as CERT skills, but as life skills, because these are skills that would be also desirable for employment. Someone coming out with a First Theater CPR card would definitely demonstrate to an employer someone having some skill sets that would be desirable to have. So again, we see tremendous growth potential in the CERT program, what it's gonna take everybody, and especially the community, 'cause we are asking people to volunteer to be a part of these teams and programs. So again, thanks for all the support from the council, the administration, and especially the volunteers and the community members. And again, thank you for taking these measures out of order and allowing me to take them all at once and if we're not in office, thank you.
Thank you. And so that, there is nothing else on the agenda that you need to be, that correct?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm also aware that Mr. Steve Arnett is in Hilo, and I was, oh, I'm sorry, I never would have known Mr. Kern. Any more discussion on Resolution 412? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. I just think it's reset here, hang on. And Mr. Arnett, I'm aware that you're here for a resolution and three bills, but after we go through those, if there's anything else, just let me know. I'll start with the resolution, Resolution 360, Mr. Clerk.
Resolution 360-14, authorizing the mayor of the County of Hawaii to execute and submit the 2014 action plan and all other related documents to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2014 Community Development Block Grant CB, CDBG program. The county anticipates a 2014 CDBG allocation of $2,677,897, and the county also received an additional $99,811.52 of program income from the Residential Emergency Repair Program, and anticipates receiving an additional $75,000 of program income within the 2014 program year for a total of $2,852,708.52 of CDBG funds. The county shall utilize these funds according to the program rules and regulations to comply with the program certifications as provided in the attached action plan. Reference communication 779, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved FC 150.
Ms. Point Dexter, motion to approve Bill 364. Move by Ms. Point Dexter, second by Ms. Ford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Resolution 360 is adopted. Mr. Clerk, on page 13, you'll find another bill for first reading, could you please read Bill 227?
Bill 227, amendments ordinance number 13-65, as amended, operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014. Appropriate revenues in the federal 2014 block grant account, $2,677,897, and the block grant program income account, $174,811.52, for a total of, for a total of $2,852,708.52, and appropriate to the same to the following accounts, Hilo Adult Care Center, site and infrastructure improvements, $500,000, Pahoa Fire Station, wildland brush truck acquisition, $165,000, Hilo Drag Strip Accessibility Compliance, $12,258.52, Habitat for Humanity, Affordable Workforce Housing Land Acquisition, $292,000, Residential Emergency Repair Program, $358,450, and Administration Planning and Fair Housing, $535,000. Reference communication 779, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved FC 155.
Ms. Point Dexter? A motion to approve Bill 227? Move by Ms. Point Dexter, second by Mr. Canuha. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of Bill 227, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes, and for the record, there's only she has rejoined us. The Bill 227 moves to second reading. Mr. Clerk, Bill 228?
Bill 228, amendments ordinance number 13-65, as amended, operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014. Increases revenues in the federal 2013 block grant account, $127,655, and appropriate save to the removal of architectural barriers, Americans with disabilities on compliance various county facilities, the county $500,000, and Boys and Girls Club of the Big Island Certified Kitchen Construction, $52,655. Reference communication 780, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved FC 156.
Ms. Point Dexter, motion to approve Bill 228? Move by Ms. Point Dexter, second by Mr. Canuha. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? There are nine ayes, Bill 228 moves to second reading. Mr. Clerk, on the next page 14, Bill 229?
Bill 229, amendments ordinance number 13-65, as amended, operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014. Increases revenues in federal grants, workforce investment at WIA account, $1,521,232, and appropriate save to the following accounts, WIA Administration Planning, 2014, 2015, $152,121, WIA Adult Program, 2014, 2015, $495,316, WIA Schools Dislocated Worker Program, 2014, 2015, $405,276, and WIA Youth Program, 2014, 2015, $416,519. Funded to be used to assist dislocated workers and youth by providing services that would train individuals to increase employment retention, earning skills, and literacy. Reference communication 781, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved FC 157.
Ms. Point Dexter? Motion to approve Bill 229? Move by Ms. Point Dexter, second by Mr. Canuha. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, Bill 229 moves to second reading.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I actually have one more, which is the following.
Oh, you do?
Number 230, please. I'm sorry, 230, I may indulge you.
Okay, which one is it?
Bill number 230.
Bill 230, okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Bill 230, amendments ordinance number 08-106 of the Hawaiians, of the County of Hawaii, as heretofore amended pertaining to the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose- of funding all or a portion of the costs of various capital improvement projects for the county. Amendments, chapter, amendments Exhibit A, draft five, by decreasing funding for the Kealakehi Waste Water Treatment Plant, WTT, eration upgrade, $2,650,000, and eliminating funding for the Kealakehi WTT Sludge Removal Project, $3 million, due to the Department of Environmental Management's acquisition of state revolving fund financing for these projects. Add repair, replace wastewater facilities, $3 million, and Kamakua Nui Community Development, $2,650,000. Reference Communication 782, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved FC 158. Note, two-thirds vote required pursuant to Section 47-5, Voting Rights Statute.
Ms. Point Dexter, motion to approve Bill 230? Move by Ms. Point Dexter, second by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? All in favor of Bill 230, please say aye. Any opposed? Bill 230 will move to second reading.
I'm Chairman Mahala for allowing me to have those taken out of order.
Oh, you're very welcome, sir. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
I know, Mayhula, you are waiting, but if you don't mind, there's one other resolution I did have to take out of order first. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please go to Resolution 409? Resolution 409, page 11. Thank you, yeah. Page 11.
Resolution 409-1 for transfers appropriated and appropriation out in from the designated fund account, credit saved to the designated fund account to provide a grant to Kailua Village Business Improvement District, Inc., for the development of construction engineering documents for the Alii Drive lighting project. Transfers appropriated, $30,000 out and from clerk council services, contingent to some of the council's 67. Credit saved to transfer to highway funds, signals and street lights, miscellaneous contract services, Alii Drive lighting project. Reference Communication 850 introduced by Mr. Kanuha, waived FC.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution 409-14.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Move by Mr. Kern, second by Mr. Nishihara. I'm going to recognize Mr. Kanuha.
Madam Chair, thank you. With this resolution and contingency fund requests are given, I'm, I'm an automatic member of the Kailua Village Business Improvement District Board, so I wanted to make sure that I disclose that if, if there is a conflict of interest by giving this money to the nonprofit, that I wanted to disclose that and, and kind of make sure that I recuse myself from voting and I won't participate in the discussion. So I want the council members to know that we have Debbie Baker to answer any questions you need for the contingency request, but I'll recuse myself from voting and participating in discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Kanuha. Ms. Ford, could I call Ms. Baker forward?
Please identify yourself in your position with the Village Improvement District.
Yes, Debbie Baker, Executive Director, Kailua Village Business Improvement District.
Thank you. I'm really pleased that this project is going forward, but I'd like to know the distance along the Alii Drive that it will cover from the intersection with Palani, how far south?
Our district goes to, just south of Royal Corner Resort, somewhere that old triangle, right there. And it will specifically look at the Alii Drive, but also make recommendations for other streets within the district.
Okay, but the lighting along the Alii Drive, I know that every time that we have a parade down the Alii Drive, there's a section from, almost from the palace south through the real congested part of the village.
Right.
You know, past Uncle Bellies and keep going down until you get to the end of Coconut Grove.
Mm-hmm.
And there's sporadic lighting through there.
Right.
Very dark and dismal looking. Will your project cover that area with new lighting?
Yes.
And is it on both sides of the street or just one side?
I think both sides need to be addressed, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for the speaker or comments? If there are none, all in favor of Resolution 409, please say aye. Any opposed? There are eight ayes and there's one more queue.
Thank you.
At this time, I will be going to the top of the order of resolutions unless anybody has any further requests. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, Resolution 351-14?
Resolution 35-1 for authorizes director finance to enter into negotiations for the acquisition of the Ka'ou parcels with tax map keys, 9-5-011:001, 9-5-011:004, 9-5-00011:005, and 9-5-011:006, in the Aha Pua'a of Ka'una, 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 Ka'una Mano, and tax map key, 9-5-012:001, in the Aha Pua'a of Pu'u Pua'avella. Pursuant to Chapter 2, Article 42호, A County Code, 1983, 2005 Edition, as amended, the Ka'ou Mano properties, 1,264.395 acres, are listed as a key priority for the purchase in the 2012 Annual Report of the Public Access Open Space and Natural Resources Preservation Commission. Reference Communication 763 introduced by Ms. Ford, approved FC 149.
Motion to approve Resolution 351-14.
Move by Ms. Ford, second by Mr. Kern.
Move to amend Resolution 351-14 with the contents of Communications 763.3, that's in the dispute folder. Thank you. All this is doing is correcting the acreage. The landowner, the current landowner, just finished a survey and we found, and he found that the acreage was actually more. And this will, this acquisition is still subject to the county having its surveyor go out and do it. And we do have the word approximately in here, so all we're doing is correcting the proposed acres to be acquired. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of amending Resolution 351-14 with the contents of Communications 763.3, please say aye. Any opposed? There are nine ayes. The resolution is amended. Ms. Ford, move to the floor.
Normally, this resolution would be pal today, so, but the rules say this is a substantial change, it would be held over, so I move to suspend the rule, to hold this over and go ahead and vote on 351-14, and this will be the last, thank you, this will be the last time it needs to be heard at all, and if we pass it today, it's done.
That was a motion by Ms. Ford, second by Mr. Kern, to suspend the rules and, for allowing us to continue to vote on this today. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any more discussion on the resolution as amended? Ms. Ford?
Nope.
Ms. Nishihara?
Ms. Ford, this property of the 9,200-plus acres, almost all that property is like, I guess, not usable because of like historical things, or there's like a heau, or there are burial sites.
There's over 400 already identified archaeological sites that must be preserved, which is the reason we don't want development going on down there.
But I don't think, well, in those areas, area, they wouldn't be able to develop anyway, correct?
They could try, and we don't know what a future council will do.
No, what I mean, but they would have to go through, I mean, you're on the burial council, right? So isn't there like a process?
Well, in terms of burials, yes, there's a process of going through burial council and state historic preservation in terms of buffer zones, but archaeological features will have to go through state historic preservation, and many of, many times with development, archaeological features are data recovered. So, you know, they, they, they gather the data, and then if there is any future development that's proposed and zoned for whatever it is, they could go in and bulldoze those archaeological features. But in terms of burials, the burial council has a, their sole mission is to say whether you can reinterior burials or leave in place. So it's up to the burial council basically to say, in, in, in terms of development, whether those burials need to be moved or they're, or they're preserved.
Yeah, and if they're preserved, then there's no development in that area. Correct?
The area of the, of the burial.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
If there are none, Mr. Elgon?
May I ask Councilwoman Ford a question?
Yes, she's shaking her head, yes.
Thank you. You heard the testified earlier. Do you have any comments regarding her questions?
I have, the only comment that I would make at this time is that when we go to acquire this parcel, one of the things that will happen with the chain of ownership will be researched by our own property manager through a title company, and the issues that she brought up will all be uncovered at that point in time. I don't see any reason for us to delay in the acquisition of this land, even if it was, turned out that it originally was ceded land. I can't tell you today what the chain of title has become or what, what changes were made. All I know is we've got a willing owner at this time, and we want to acquire this land to preserve not only the archaeological features, but the shoreline and make it part of the, of the park, Honu'ahu. So all of that will be investigated. Ms. Mahi is certainly welcome to write a letter that I can forward to the property manager and have that investigated. I don't see any problem with holding us back for that reason.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ford, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? None, all in favor, please say, oh, all in favor of adopting Resolution 351-14 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes, and the resolution moves, is adopted. Thank you. Let me take a five-minute recess at this time, and it'll just be a quick one. Thank you. Please read Resolution 356.
Resolution 356-14 accepts the dedication of drainage lot 38, being tax map key 2-5-065:038, situated at Punahua Ma'aka subdivision, Punahua First, District of South Hilo, Island of Hawaii, from Akalea LLC. Dedication drainage lot containing an area of 6,464 square feet, including all subdivision improvements to the County of Hawaii. Reference Communication 773, introduced by Mr. Kanuha by request, approved, PWPRC-67.
Kanuha?
Move to approve Resolution 356.
Move by Mr. Kanuha, second by Mr. Kern. Is there any discussion? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 356 is adopted. Resolution 357?
Resolution 357-14 accepts the dedication of roadway lot 40, Hokulani Street Extension and Haleloke Street Extension, being a portion of tax map key 2-5-065:040, situated at Punahua Ma'aka subdivision, Punahua First, District of South Hilo, Island of Hawaii, from Akalea LLC. Dedicates the roadway lot containing a combined area of 164,548 square feet, including all subdivision improvements to the County of Hawaii. Reference Communication 774, introduced by Mr. Kanuha by request, approved, PWPRC-68.
Mr. Kanuha?
I move to approve Resolution 357.
Move by Mr. Kanuha, second by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 357 is adopted. Resolution 360? Oh, sorry, we did take care of 360. 361.
Resolution 361-14 authorizes the Office of the Mayor to enter into agreement with the State of Hawaii Department of Attorney General pursuant to Voting Rights Statute 467 for the Hawaii County Police Department Sexual Assault Forensic Examiner Safe Program. Funds in the amount of $24,946 would be used to contract an agency to oversee, coordinate, and perform services of the safe program, which is an undertaking by the county to improve its response to violent crimes against women. Reference Communication 784, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved, FC 151.
Ms. Point Dexter?
Motion to approve Resolution 361-14?
Move by Ms. Point Dexter, second by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 361 is adopted. Resolution 362?
Resolution 362-14 authorizes the payment of funds of a latter fiscal year and, and of more than one fiscal year for multi-year agreement for the purchase of software and licensing for the Department of Information Technology. Authorizes the mayor to enter into a three-year agreement with an approximate cost of $126,757 per year to purchase Microsoft Office 2013 software and associated license agreements that would be incorporated to new computers for the county. The county would save approximately $15,998 in software cost, as well as additional savings realized from pre-upgrades of Microsoft 2013 to future versions during the term of the agreement. Reference Communication 785, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved, FC 152.
Ms. Point Dexter?
Motion to approve Resolution 362-14?
Move by Ms. Point Dexter, second by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 362 is adopted. Next, Resolution 363?
Resolution 363-14 authorizes the payment of funds of a latter fiscal year and, of more than one fiscal year for multi-year agreement with the Hawaiian Telcom for integrated services, digital network, primary ring interface service. Authorizes the mayor to enter into a three-year, three-year agreement at a cost of $1,185 per year, excuse me, per month for services in Hilo and at the Westway Civic Center. The county would save $975 a month. Reference Communication 786, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved, FC 153.
Ms. Point Dexter?
Motion to approve Resolution 363-14?
Move by Ms. Point Dexter, second by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 363 is adopted. Resolution 378?
Resolution 378-14 transfers appropriated and appropriation out in from the designated fund account, a credit saved to designated fund account to provide additional funds for the Inola Boulevard Shoulder Improvement County. Transfers appropriated, $2,000 out and from clerk council services, continued to the Council District 5, credit saved to the Department of Public Works, transfers to Capital Project Fund, General, Inola Boulevard Shoulder Improvement County. Reference Communication 808, introduced by Mr. Kirk, waived FC.
Mr. Kirk?
Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution 378-14.
Move by Mr. Kirk, second by Mr. Kanuha.
Thank you, yeah, real briefly, we voted on CIP funds some time ago to make this approved, but this is just me putting some additional money where I'm at, and trying to make it all happen, and it is happening, they're doing it, it should be done very soon, and Mahala, everyone, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Resolution 378 is adopted. Resolution 386?
Resolution 386-14 transfers appropriated and appropriation out in from the designated fund account, a credit saved to designated fund account to provide a grant to child and family service in the east Hawaii, to assist with transportation needs of its, of its consumers. Transfers appropriated, $1,995 out and from clerk council services, continued to the Council District 4, credit saved to the mass transit, mass transit, other recurrent expenses, miscellaneous contract services, bus tickets for child and family service. Reference Communication 821, introduced by Mr. Elgon, waived FC.
I move to approve Resolution 386-14.
Thank you. Move by Mr. Elgon, second by Mr. Kern. Mr. Elgon, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just want to make a quick comment saying that there's, of course, we understand the need for transportation. Of course, we understand the need for transportation, and this is just a... So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor of Resolution 386, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution is adopted. Now, Resolution 387.
Resolution 387-14 transfers appropriates appropriation out and from designated fund account, credit statement to designated fund account for wildlife firefighters, firefighting boots and equipment for the volunteer firefighters in North Kohala, Waikiee, and Kanehoa in North and South Kohala. Transfers appropriates $5,000 out and from clerk council services continued through the Council District 5, credit statement to Hawaii Fire Department, training and volunteer fire, other current expenses, public safety supplies, firefighting boots and equipment, North Kohala, Waikiee, and Kanehoa volunteer firefighters. Reference Communication 822, introduced by Ms. Willie, wave FC.
Ms. Willie? Make a motion to approve...
I move to approve Resolution 387-14.
Moved by Ms. Willie, second by Ms. Ford. Any discussion?
So I... One point I just want to clarify is that this is not just for North Kohala. It's also South Kohala. It's the three volunteer departments in the district. And there are 27, or perhaps more at this time, volunteers. We happen to be in an area...
Allah, this is getting... This is a test of our building's broadcast system. If this were an actual emergency, we would provide information and advise you on appropriate action to take. Again, this is only a test. When you hear the testing of the broadcast system in your office, please have a designated person from your office immediately email Mr. Scott Knowles, risk management officer, to advise him that your system is working.
Going to Resolution 388.
Failure to notify Scott will indicate the system in your office.
For transfers appropriates appropriation out and from designated fund account, credit statement to designated fund account to purchase maintenance equipment for the parks in Waikoloa, Kauaihi, and Kohala. Transfers appropriates $3,700 out and from clerk council services continued to the Council District 9. Credit statement to the Department of Parks and Recreation, parks maintenance equipment, miscellaneous equipment, maintenance equipment for District 9 parks. Reference Communication 823, introduced by Ms. Willie, wave FC.
Ms. Willie? Moved by Ms. Willie, second by Ms. Ford. Ms. Willie, do you have a comment?
Yes, I... Just one point about this park maintenance equipment is right now Waikoloa, Kauaihi, and North Kohala share equipment, so they spend a lot of time running back and forth, whether sharing edgers or other items, rakes. And this will help it so that they will be able to maximize the time that we are there, there, serving the public and provide a better, higher-quality parks for our kids and families and visitors.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Resolution 388 is adopted. Resolution 394.
Resolution 394-14 authorizes the Office of the Mayor to enter into agreement with the Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Forestry and Wildlife Pursuit and O'Reilly Statute 467 for a volunteer fire assistance program grant to the Hawaii Fire Department. Funds in the amount of $15,000 would be used towards training and the acquisition of equipment as specified under the Volunteer Fire Assistance Program. Reference Communication 821, introduced by Ms. Pointexter, wave FC.
Motion to approve? Motion to approve Resolution 394-14.
Moved by Ms. Pointexter, second by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? None? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Resolution 394 is adopted. Resolution 395.
Resolution 395-14 transfers appropriates appropriation out and from the designated fund account, a credit statement to designated fund account to provide a grant to the child and family service to purchase supplies for the East Hawaii Domestic Abuse Shelter. Transfers appropriates $1,712.14 out from clerk council services continued to the Council District 4, credit statement to the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney. Prosecuting Attorney, other expenses miscellaneous contract services, child and family service, East Hawaii Domestic Abuse Shelter. Reference Communication 836, introduced by Mr. Ilagon. Wave FC.
I move to approve Resolution 395-14.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Ilagon, second by Mr. Kern. Mr. Ilagon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to note that Resolution 395-14 is pretty much a companion to Resolution Number 386-14, where the contingency fund is going to the Office of the Prosecutor, and they will be funding the supplies for the East Hawaii Domestic Abuse Shelter. And with the assistance, providing basic supplies such as blankets, shoes, school supplies, and hygiene items to the victims. So I just want to thank Prosecutor Mitchell Robb. And also, just to add on top of that, on the previous resolution, I just want to thank Tiffany Kai for the transportation regarding the bus tickets, for making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ilagon. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 395 is adopted. Resolution 396.
Resolution 396-14 transfers appropriates appropriation out and from the designated fund account, a credit statement to designated fund account for the purchase of Americans with disabilities act compliant bleachers for Ho'oko Park in Waikoloa Village. Transfers appropriates $2,000 out and from clerk council services continued to the Council District 9. Credit statement to Department of Parks and Recreation, Recreation Division Equipment, Miscellaneous Equipment, Ho'oko Park, Americans with Disabilities Act Bleachers. Reference Communication 837, introduced by Ms. Willie, wave FC.
Ms. Willie?
Yes. I move to approve Resolution 396-14.
Moved by Ms. Willie, second by Mr. Kern. She's... Any comments, Ms. Willie?
It's that these bleachers are movable, and so that there are a number of parks there, and if there is something going on at another one of the parks, that they could be moved and utilized at different locations, which is nice. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 397 is adopted. We took care of 398... Oh, I'm sorry. 396 is adopted. We're going to Resolution 397.
Resolution 397-14 transfers appropriates appropriation out and from designated fund account, a credit statement to designated fund account to provide a grant to Home Services Hawaii Aid to pay tuition for children residing in residing at Nahakahua, Hare, or Uluviini to attend the 2014 Summer Fund Program. Transfers appropriates $6,000 out and from clerk council services continued to the Council District 8, credit statement to Department of Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Administration, other current expenses miscellaneous contract services, Summer Fund tuition for Uluviini children. Reference Communication 838, introduced by Ms. Yoff, wave FC.
Madam Chair.
Kanuha.
I move to approve Resolution 397.
Thank you. I have a motion for Mr. Kanuha, second by Mr. Kern. This is my contingency funds. I'm very pleased to be able to help the children at Uluviini Transitional Housing to help us transportation and their tuition paid so they can attend the Summer Fund Program this summer. And I would ask for your support. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Resolution 397 is adopted. And we did take Resolution 398, so I'll go to Resolution 399.
Resolution 399-14 transfers appropriates appropriation out and from the designated fund account, a credit statement to designated fund account to provide a grant to Malama or Puna for the Pohawahi Intermediate School Project Grad. Transfers appropriates $2,000 out from clerk council services continued to the Council District 5, credit statement to Department of Liquor Control, public programs, miscellaneous contract services, Malama or Puna, Pohawahi Intermediate School Project Grad. Reference Communication 840, introduced by Mr. Kern. Wave FC.
Mr. Kern.
I move to approve Resolution 399-14.
Any discussion?
Yeah, real briefly, this speaks for itself. It's just my effort to try to get all the high schools in my district to have project grad nights. I appreciate the support. Thank you so much.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 399 is adopted. Resolution 400.
Resolution 400-14 transfers appropriates appropriation out and from the designated fund account, a credit statement to designated fund account for the purchase of supplies for the Department of Parks and Recreation Summer Fund Program at Papaloa Law Gymnasium. Transfers appropriates $4,000 out and from clerk council services continued to the Council District 1, credit statement to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Summer Intercession, other current expenses, education, recreation, science, Summer Fund Program Supplies, Papaloa Gymnasium. Reference Communication 841, introduced by Ms. Pointexter, wave FC.
Ms. Pointexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 400-14.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Pointexter, second by Mr. Kern. Ms. Pointexter.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'm really, really happy that we're revising, you know, the activities that are happening in Papaloa, because that community is growing and has a lot of children and needs. So opening that facility back up to the Summer Fund Program is vital to the building the community, safe and healthy community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 400 is adopted. Resolution 401.
Resolution 401-14 transfers appropriates appropriation out and from designated fund account, a credit statement to designated fund account for the purchase of citric acid for the North and South Kona, Ka'uu, and Greater Volcano areas of Council Districts 6, 7, and 8. Transfers appropriates $1,470 out and from clerk council services continued to the Council District 7, credit statement to the Department of Research and Development, Agriculture, Research and Development, other current expenses, miscellaneous contract services, purchase of citric acid for North and South Kona, Ka'uu, and Greater Volcano areas of Council Districts 6, 7, and 8. Funds would be used towards koki frog infestation. Reference Communication 842, introduced by Mr. Kanuha, wave FC.
Mr. Kanuha.
I move to approve Resolution 401.
Moved by Mr. Kanuha, second by Ms. Ford. Mr. Kanuha.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is another program designed to control the infestation of koki frogs. I plan to put more money in next time, but this is a small amount that hopefully can be used to stop the spread of it in District 6, 7, and 8. I know there's a big section in District... In my district, District 7, more towards the Makai side, that really doesn't have that many koki frogs. So hopefully, we can at least stop the spread of it, and if not, move to... Move further into the infestation to decrease the amount of the infestation of the koki frogs in these districts. So I look for everybody's support. I know there's a few resolutions coming up afterwards. I'm seeing the same exact thing, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kanuha. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 401 is adopted. We took care of Resolution 402, so we'll move to 403.
Resolution 403-14 transfers appropriates appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit statement to a designated fund account to provide a grant to Hu'i Okinawa for the 2014 Hari Boat Festival. Transfers appropriates $4,500 out from clerk council services continued to the Council District 2, credit statement to the Department of Research and Development, Tourism and Promotion, miscellaneous contract services, 2014 Hari Boat Festival. Reference Communication 844, introduced by Mr. Yoshimoto, wave FC.
Mr. Yoshimoto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve Resolution 403-14.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Mr. Yoshimoto, second by Mr. Ilagon. Mr. Yoshimoto?
Yes, real briefly. Thank you, Madam Chair. I ask for councilmember's support. This is the Hari Boat Festival. We've supported this event in the past, and we're happy to be able to do so this term. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other... Ms. Willie?
I just want to thank councilmember Yoshimoto for funding... Helping to fund this event. I'm very much in support of building up our sister-city relationships. We do have a sister-city involved here. And we tend to, from our Japanese sister-cities to this island, have a great deal of participation from their side. And I just want to work in the future how we can reciprocate and make it build stronger relationships. And this is one event that does so. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Sorry, just real quickly. I actually raced and paddled in one of these events several years ago, and it was a lot of fun. So I fully support this. Thank you, Mr. Yoshimoto, and hopefully, everybody else can go participate in it in the future.
Thank you. I'll take the vote now. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 403 is adopted. We have dealt with 404, 405, so we'll move to 406.
Resolution 406-14 transfers appropriates appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit statement to a designated fund account for the purchase of citric acid to reduce the infestation of koki frogs in North and South Kona, Ka'uu, and the Greater Volcano areas. Transfers appropriates $3,000 out and from clerk council services continued to the Council District 6, credit statement to Research and Development, Agriculture, Research and Development, other current expenses miscellaneous contract services, purchase of citric acid for North and South Kona, Ka'uu, and Greater Volcano, Council Districts 6, 7, and 8. Reference Communication 847, introduced by Ms. Ford, wave FC.
Ms. Ford. Move to approve Resolution 406-14.
Moved by Ms. Ford, second by Mr. Kanuha.
Thank you. This is obviously a companion bill for a resolution to eradicate koki frogs, if at all possible, in our area. I have a massive infestation in South Kona. Ka'uu may be having some problems as well. And I'm not too sure about Volcano. But we wanted to cover the whole area in District 6, 7, and 8. In the case of this $3,000, it's going to be allow the koki frog team to get free citric acid.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 4... There are nine ayes. Resolution 406 is adopted. Resolution 407. And before you read that, I just wanted to make an announcement. I know it is noon, and we have almost finished with the resolution, so if there's no objection, we'll get through the resolution. Unless we've got an answer. Okay. Mr. Clerk, Resolution 407.
Resolution 407-14 transfers appropriates appropriation out and from the designated fund account, a credit statement to designated fund account for purchase of citric acid to control the koki frog infestation. Transfers appropriates $2,000 out and from clerk council services continued to the Council District 8, credit statement to the Department of Research and Development, Agriculture, Research and Development, other current expenses miscellaneous contract services for citric acid for koki frog infestation. Reference Communication 848, introduced by Ms. Yoff, wave FC.
Mr. Kanuha.
Uh, I move to approve Resolution 407.
Thank you. Move by Mr. Kenah, second by Mr. Kern. Uh, this contingency relief from District Eight, um, will be combined with the contingency money from, um, District Six and Seven, and to help, um, with the eradication of koki frogs, um, as Ms. Ford and Mr. Kenah have already explained, so I ask for your support. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 407 is adopted. Resolution, oh, Mr. Ilagon?
Um, I know you wanted to get through the resolution, but is it okay if we take our lunch?
There's only about two more reso, or three, I think. There's four, so.
If there's four, then is it okay if we take our lunch?
Right after that. I think that's gonna go pretty fast.
Sounds good, I'm not gonna argue.
Go ahead, Mr. Clerk. Um, Resolution 408.
Resolution 408, trans, Resolution 408 dash one for transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit saved to designated fund account for teen dating violence prevention, peer education conferences. Transfers appropriates two thousand five hundred dollars out from clerk council services contingency to the Council District Nine, credit saved to the office of the Prosecuting Attorney Committee on Status of Women, miscellaneous contract, teen dating violence prevention, peer education conferences. Reference Communication 849, introduced by Ms. Willie, waved FC.
Ms. Willie. Motion to approve Resolution 408.
So, don't move.
Move by Ms. Willie, second by Ms. Ford. Any discussion, Ms. Willie?
No.
All right. Ms. Ford.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, and this is just supporting the same program that's been held, and I understand it's been very successful and, um, very helpful, and I just want to mention one statistic, and that is out of, last year out of over two hundred assault rapes, on close to a hundred and ninety-five of the women refused to press charges and go forward. So, I think that this is an area that we need to work on, it's often behind the scenes, and we don't see the harm that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Thank you. Uh, we don't have all the stats yet from, um, Dr. Murray's presentations around the island. Um, there were some schools that we were not able to cover, um, and I would like to plant a little seed in everybody's mind, this is a serious problem, this is an epidemic on the island. We've got these kids, what I learned, we've got kids that are being assaulted in their own homes, and then they go out on a date and should be treated like gold, and should be treating their partner like gold, and instead, the abuses continue on in the dating environment. Um, so, the seed that I would like to plant is that we need to get this funded for all the schools next year without having to go into the contingency funds, because this is something we should be providing every single year to the kids on this island so that they learn this is not acceptable behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Hearing no further comments. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 408 is adopted. Going to Resolution 411.
Um, Ms. Yoff, I believe Mr. Yoshimoto might not be here any longer.
Oh, thank you.
He is still in Kilauea.
It's, okay, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Well, let me, let me know if he leaves, but, uh, hopefully he can, um, stay with us for two, three more minutes.
Would you like to bring my lunch?
Pardon me?
Go on, now, Jim.
Resolution 411 dash one for transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit saved to designated fund account to provide a grant to Puna Community Medical Center, PCMC, for the PCMC Building Fund Emergency Room. Transfers appropriates five thousand dollars out and from clerk council services contingency to the Council District Five, credit saved to the Department of Research and Development, Hawaii County Research Center, miscellaneous contract services, PCMC, PCMC Building Fund Emergency Room. Reference Communication 853, introduced by Mr. Kern, waved FC.
Mr. Kern.
Move to approve Resolution, uh, 411 dash fourteen.
Move by Mr. Kern, second by Ms. Ford. Is there a comment?
Uh, just putting this money towards a tremendous community effort in the district that really needs this, appreciate your support.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Going to Resolution 413.
Resolution 413 dash one for transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit saved to the designated fund account for equipment for the Mulele Beach Park Pavilion. Transfers appropriates three thousand five hundred and seventy dollars out from clerk council services contingency to the Council District Six, credit saved to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Parks Maintenance Equipment, miscellaneous equipment, Mulele Beach Park. Reference Communication 857, introduced by Ms. Ford, waved FC.
Ms. Ford.
I'm sorry. Move to approve Resolution 413 dash fourteen.
Move by Ms. Ford, second by Mr. Kern.
Thank you. Um, as, some of you know that Mulele Beach Park is a very tiny little park, but it serves a community, um, of the last fishing village in, on the Big Island. Not only that, but on the weekends, it's filled with tourists and filled with people from outside of the area, and the park is really being overwhelmed. This, uh, first resolution for these contingency funds is my effort to do a major overhaul in this park. Um, the overhaul, as you can see, I won't go onto too much of it, more wooden benches, um, um, barbie coop pet, uh, grill, window security, and, uh, windows for the office. Right now, I will just say, it's a dangerous situation, physically dangerous situation. So, um, this is just the first of many efforts to come to get this park up to speed for the people of that village. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are nine ayes. Resolution 413 is adopted, and this is the last one, um, after this, we'll take a lunch break. Resolution 414.
Resolution 414 dash one for transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit saved to the designated fund account to purchase various equipment. Transfers appropriates thirty-six thousand three hundred and ten dollars out and from clerk council services, salaries and wages, regular salaries and wages, credit saved to clerk council service equipment, miscellaneous equipment, um, various equipment.